Good afternoon. Students returning and prospective of UWI Mona campus. Welcome to this very important town hall meeting to do with matters pertaining to your financing, the financing of your education. We're all aware that the COVID-19 has come not only suddenly, but has left a significant dent in many people's financing. It has impacted almost every citizen in a negative way as far as our finances are concerned. And we are aware that many of our students, both returning and prospective, will face some amount of challenge in financing their education in this financial year and probably going forward. And against this background, the University of the West Indies Mona has taken the extraordinary initiative to have this forum jointly with our partners at the Student Loan Bureau and our Guild Council to lay out to you what are the possibilities at the Student Loan Bureau in terms of accessing financing for your education. So we are very pleased to have you today on the town hall. My name is Donovan Stanbury, your registrar. And joining us very soon, any minute now will be our campus principal. And we have here today important representative of the Student Loan Bureau. We have online who will address you shortly, the acting executive director, Mrs. Charmaine Rose Anderson, who will join us by Zoom. And sitting right beside me to my immediate left is Ms. Cheryl Sergeau, the manager for loan servicing department. And beside her, Ms. Annika Hughes, assistant manager of the loan processing department. Also joining us at the town hall today are important members of the UWI Mona team, management team that will be here to support. The principal and supporters in answering your queries. I'd just like to introduce to you, I'm sitting here in the council room here today. On my right, we have Ms. Kaidian Martin, Director of Marketing Recruitment and Communications. I don't know if you can see her. We also have Ms. Shauna Hastings, Manager of Student Financing, Office of Student Financing. We have Dr. Marcia Morgan Allen, Senior Assistant Registrar for Admissions. Immediately beside me on my right, Mr. Jonathan Archie, Senior Assistant Registrar. We have the principal who has now joined us. Please welcome Principal Professor Dale Weber. And on my extreme left, we have Mr. Jason McKenzie, Director of Office of Student Services and Development. Beside him, Mr. Lincoln Gordon, Student Administrative Services Supervisor. And of course, Mrs. Jacqueline Scott Crossley, Acting Manager, Billings and Receivable. So we have here a team, I think, sufficiently equipped to help you to navigate all the issues that pertain to accessing financing from the Student Loan Bureau. You will be able, of course, to fill your question through the chat option on the YouTube. And after the presentations, we'll take those questions. So we have a very, very simple format today. We're going to start with some welcome and opening remarks from our principal. Thereafter, we'll ask our colleagues from the Student Loan Bureau to make a presentation and then we'll go into a question and answer session. So thank you all for joining us. And we hope today we'll have a very fruitful and productive discourse. So at this time, may I now invite our principal to make some opening statements? Principal?
Thank you very much, Dr. Stanbury, our campus registrar. Mrs. Charmaine Rose Anderson, the acting ED at the Student Loan Bureau. Cheryl Sergeau, the manager of the loan services. And Annika Hughes, the assistant manager of loan processing. Members of the UWI family. Most importantly, students and parents who are online, especially those who have taken the decision to attend the University of the West Indies. I am very pleased to share with you a few moments, a few words, as we get into this important discourse, which will be the difference maker for many of you. And we look forward to inviting you to the UWI. The UWI, as you know, is in the top 4% of universities in the world, which means you have decided to join a cadre which is going to take you to heights you've never been before. We see that journey as one that works both in the classroom and outside the classroom. It is your education that you fashion under our direction. Our strategic plan is set around access, alignment, and agility. Access to the institution, meaning not just the classrooms, but the playfields. The rooms that you will use for various activities. The halls of residence, the different clubs that are here. That access makes you who you are. It also is access to research, of which you will be a part when you become a student. And that research hopefully will take you through your entire undergrad years. And for many of you, will take you to graduate school. Under alignment, we work with our partners to try and get the best out of the university and the best out of you as individuals. And the Student Loan Bureau is one of our strongest partners to ensure that students can maximize their potential and their opportunities. Under agility, we try to become a financially healthy, robust institution. And the Student Loan Bureau is again a partner in helping us do that, facilitating you, the students and the parents, while you access that agile and top-rate university education. Over the last couple of years, the university has seen a change in student's loan application, and we were concerned. So we were very glad when our partners at the Student Loan said they would share information, open a discourse to try and make the gateway easier and the path easier to trod. There's been a noticed decline in the applications for student's loan coming to the University of the West Indies between 2018 and 2020. When I just started as principal, we had 23% of our students applying for a student's loan. Now it's down to 15%. And we hope that today's exercise will renew, reinvigorate, and get those applications back up. Because it is your gateway to the future that you are looking at. There's however, been no change in the student's loan commitment to the students and to the institution, in that the dollar value has remained the same. So notwithstanding the fact few applications, the student loans continue to provide as much as is asked for. There's almost a 90% acceptance rate. So I think it is foolhardy not to get your foot in the door. A student's loan is an investment in oneself. Many of our students, in fact, 70% of our students are here as first-generation university students, which means they are the first ones from their families getting to the university. They therefore need a loan even more than others. I wish to use this opportunity to remind you that the Student Loan Bureau is there for you as the University of the West Indies is here for you. Personally, I will say my thanks. I don't know if I ever had. I came to the University of the West Indies a long time ago, but I came on a student's loan. My mother was a teacher, my father was an agriculturalist. I could never have afforded a university education without the Student Loan Bureau. Thankfully, I was able to pay it back within a year of completing. And I know that's something that many students think about. But think about your student's loan as an investment in yourself. It is a way to redouble, re-triple your worth so that you will leave the University of the West Indies told and able to do anything you want to do. I look forward to the discussions and wish for you the very best today. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Principal. And I also want to reach out and greet our students from the open campus who has also joined in this endeavor. So as we said before, friends and parents I want to reach out to who would have joined us too along with the students. We're going to have a presentation now from the Student Loan Bureau. And so I'll now turn over to the team of Cheryl Sergeau and Ms. Annika Hughes. And online is also Ms. Charmaine Rose Anderson, who will take you through the presentation. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, students, both prospective and returning students, SLB's beneficiaries, applicants, as well as prospective applicants. I'm Cheryl Sergeau, and with me is Ms. Annika Hughes. She is the assistant manager for the loan processing department. And I'm going to take you through our presentation. The format will be, we'll introduce you to some of our products, some concessions that we offer, the interest rates of our products, as well as some advantages of accessing SLB loans. And Ms. Hughes will finally take us through how to apply for a loan. The Student Loan Bureau is Jamaica's premier loan financing organization. And we at the Student Loan Bureau, we are committed to ensure that qualified Jamaicans, students have access to financial assistance to pursue their tertiary education. Over the years, we have been receiving applications in excess of 10,000 annually. And out of those numbers of persons who would have applied, we have an approval rate of 99%. So that means that almost every customer or every applicant who has submitted an application, that person is almost guaranteed to get an approval to access the funding for tertiary education. We have three types of loan products. The main product is the targeted loan product. We have the pay-as-you-study loan, and that we call PAYS. And we also have the postgraduate loan. I'm going to go through each product. The targeted loan product, that's our main product, and that's the product that most applicants will apply for. The target market are those applicants pursuing undergraduate studies. That product offers the moratorium period, which means that while you're in school, you're not required to make payments. However, we do accept payments if you so desire. So you have that period in terms of not thinking about repaying Student Loan Bureau. Focus on your studies and get along with your education. There is an additional, sorry, 14 months after you would have completed your program of study in terms of a grace period. So after you completed, let's just say, June of this year, then your repayment will begin September of next year. Our general loan tenures for the targeting loan product ranges between 15 and 20 years. 20 years for those programs are for those customers who are pursuing programs of study in the medical field, including nursing as well as law. Generally, those programs are more costly. And also the duration to complete those program of studies is generally longer than the other programs. And so we extended the loan tenure to 20 years for those. Mark you, we are coming from 10 years. Generally, the loan tenure was 10 years. And we've increased it to 15 years and 20 years for those exceptional programs. Our interest rates, we have two interest rates for the product. We have a rate for the moratorium period, and that's 7.8%. And in the repayment period, that's 9.5%. Those are the lowest rates that you can find on the market for an unsecured loan. And all you need is two guarantors. So I'm imploring you, please take up this opportunity to invest in your education. Repayment, as I mentioned before, begins September of the following year after completion. And applicants can access up to $1 million per academic year for this loan product. So each year, you can access up to $1 million. I mentioned earlier, there are two guarantors that are required. The application period generally runs between February to May. This year, because of COVID, we've actually extended the deadline to August 31st. So there is still that room for you to submit your loan application. Please do so. And you may do so online at www.slbja.com. All applicants who submit a loan application, they will be assessed for a grant. That grant generally is $50,000. And of course, there are conditions that apply for accessing that grant. Normally, persons who we classify as needy, and of course, you know, we would have to do that means test, and also persons who are on the PATH program. So once you apply, you're likely to get a grant. Sorry. And that grant is to assist with books and other little costs that students may have while attending universities. We have a product here, the targeted loan product. And I have an example here for if a customer were to borrow four loans for each academic year and were using, say, for example, somebody in social sciences. I think this one is a pharmacist student. And so if that applicant borrows up to 1.3 million, an average of, say, $200,000 per annum, of course, interest is calculated on the loan once the loan has been disbursed. Generally, our disbursement is September of whatever year you would have applied for the loan. And it would have been approved and disbursed to the university. So your total principal amount would be $1.3 million. Of course, as I mentioned, interest would be calculated at that 7.8% during the moratorium period. And so by the time you would have completed a four-year program, you would have accrued in interest $759,000. Once you would have completed your program of study, what we call capitalizing the interest, that's the moratorium interest. And then we have what you call your capitalized loan balance. This is what we will use to calculate your new monthly payment for the remaining, let's just say, this is a 15-year loan for the remaining 11 years. And so I'm going to go through the repayment side of things. So at the start of repayment, that's September, you would have started with a loan balance of $2.1 million. Now we move into a different interest rate. So we are now calculating your interest at 9.5%. And may I add that this is, we're calculating interest using the reducing balance method of interest calculation. And so once persons are constantly making payments, your principal balance would reduce, and therefore, your interest costs going forward would also reduce. This typical loan, the monthly payment, is approximately $25,000. $25,000 in a gen four. And I think that is pretty much manageable for someone who was graduated of their degree and now has found herself in an entry-level job. $25,000 is manageable for most persons. And so one of the things that we have done to make our monthly payment manageable is we have extended the loan tenure. We have also reduced the interest rate. And we have moved to the reducing balance of interest calculation. And this is all to attract more customers to ensure that Jamaicans who are qualified for tertiary education, they have full access to the loan and they're able to manage the repayment. Now we're moving to the PAYS loan. Sorry, that's our second product. And this loan product is targeted towards employed professionals who are pursuing undergraduate studies. And also persons who may need additional funding for, let's just say, they got a targeted loan and the tuition may be close to the $1 million. And they would have gotten, say, $400,000 under the targeted loan. A parent, a guardian, a friend, a family member, anybody can apply for the PAYS loan to subsidize the other targeted loan for that beneficiary. So the beneficiary can access up to $1 million under the targeted loan, as well as a principal borrower, not necessarily the beneficiary, can access another $1 million under the PAYS loan. And why this is important? Because we know we have those programs that are not subsidized. And so students are expected to bear the full cost for these programs. And so we accommodate customers to be able to access those two loans, up to $2 million. And so we are encouraging persons, yes, there's no need for you to say, "I'm not going to school." We have made financing easier. We have made the product easier. You're able to access it. So please, you need to utilize it. Repayment for this product generally begins the following month after disbursement. And so, as I mentioned earlier, would have been professionals who would have applied. So your parent, a friend who are working, the person who has to be working, applies for that loan for the customer, for the beneficiary. And so immediately that loan's begin repayment. That's the following month. So if we disburse September of this year, then repayment begins December, sorry, October 25th, 24th, thereabouts, run about payday time. And so one of the requirements for this loan is that we have to have a salary reduction order in place to service this loan. Just like the other banks would do, financial institution, you would have to implement a salary reduction order. And so the loan tenure on this product is 84 months. That's seven years. So beneficiaries have, or the principal borrowers have up to seven years in which to repay the loan. And they can repay, take one loan year one, start that repayment into year two, take another portion, and then we increase the monthly payment and we can go along. The requirement in terms of guarantors, so one guarantor, and also the principal borrower. So the principal borrower does not necessarily have to be the beneficiary. All right. The interest on this loan is 6% per annum. I'm going to repeat that. 6% per annum. This is an unsecured loan. And so there's no interest rate existing in the financial sector at 6% per annum. And so parents, guardians, you can access this loan. You don't need any collaterals. All you need is one guarantor. So a mother can be the principal borrower and the father can be the guarantor. So there's no reason for you to say that I can't afford to send my daughter or my son to UWI. Let us look at a typical loan for the first year under the PAYS postgrad. Say if somebody is studying Business Administration or in the Social Science Department. Let us take a loan of $282,000. The monthly payment on that loan at the beginning, $4,800. Not even $5,000. $4,800. So I believe that is manageable, even minimum income earners would be able to afford that. So we have the household helpers, your daughters, your sons are there, applying to the university. $4,800 is manageable. There is no application deadline for this loan product. So customers can apply all year round. As the need arise, if it is that you've started university and you're able to manage to pay a part of the cost, the tuition cost, and you can't find the difference, come to us. We can approve the loan application within two weeks once we have all the necessary requirements, documentation submitted, or even earlier. Because we know that sometimes students may need to sit their exams. And so we try our utmost best in terms of, or we may assist our customers. Once we get the necessary documentation, we're able to process and give it a turnaround time so that you may sit your exam. But I'll advise, don't wait until the last minute because we have everything in place that should work out for you. The interest rate is low, the loan tenure is excellent. The application online is easy. So don't wait until the last minute when you're ready to do your exams. That's when you're coming to us. No, please, come to us early. Another criteria for the PAYS loan is that we would have to do a credit check. Of course, you know, you're accessing financial support from either the banks or anywhere else. We have to do that credit check. So ensure that your credit check is okay with the credit bureau. And so we would have to pull that. Mark you, even if it is that you have that bad credit check, once we're able to get the salary reduction order, we don't deny. We invite you in, we assess the situation and see what it is. And we are more than willing to assist in terms of granting that loan. So here we have an example of the PAYS loan. And it's a typical loan of $1 million. And what we have done, we've compared that loan with another loan at another financial institution. Let us say the bank, I use Pendriff Bank. And so for the PAYS loan, for $1 million, the customer would have seven years to repay or 84 months. The interest rate is 6% per annum. When we work out the monthly payment over those 84 months, the monthly payment is $14,608.55. That's a regular monthly payment. But let me just add though, that all of our loan products are insured. And so there's an insurance element. So our insurance rate is 0.05% of any loan amount per month. So whatever that loan amount is, 0.05% is a monthly premium. And so when we add that monthly premium, the monthly premium is $500. So your overall monthly payment will be $15,108.55. Again, this is a manageable monthly payment. When we compare that to the banks for an unsecured loan, we're looking at the same amount of money in terms of $1 million for the loan. The interest rate, 16%, and the interest rate varies across institutions. We come across institutions with 16%, 18%, and we've selected one of the lower ones. And so the monthly payment works out to be $19,862.96. Customers will save back $5,000 approximately if it is that they choose to go to the SLB. So there's no other financial institution that can give you the better rate and without the guarantee, financial guarantee. And so, yes, we need to access the loan from SLB. The postgraduate loan. We have the postgraduate loan as the name suggests. That's a persons who are pursuing postgraduate studies. Applicants may access up to $1.8 million from that product. The interest rate is 9.5%. The loan tenure, the maximum loan tenure is five years. And all the other features in terms of the guarantor, you need one guarantor. You can also be the principal borrower or the beneficiary of this loan. And/or the beneficiary. So as a graduate student, you can apply for the loan. You can get the loan, or you can have somebody apply for that loan. And also, this loan is also serviced immediately after it is disbursed. That is one month after disbursement. Because of course, we're targeting those persons who would be working and also doing postgraduate studies, or somebody who's working or employed or can afford to start making those monthly payments. So the moratorium period for the regular targeted loan for undergraduate student does not apply here. Immediate repayment meaning one month after the disbursement. So right here now, we have a summary of our interest rates based on our loan products. So for PAYS loans, that's the 6% we mentioned that earlier. The postgraduate loans, 9.5%. For the targeted loan, we have 7.8 in the repayment, sorry, in the moratorium period. And 9.5 in the repayment period. We have some special programs. And those programs, and I'll go into those later on. Those programs, we offer, customers who are enrolled in these programs, we offer their interest rate of 6% per annum. And these are just the base interest rate for each product. Persons can access up to 4% interest, depending on the product and their other benefits, other concessions that we offer. And we'll go into those shortly. So these are just the base rate that we start at. And so interest rate can be as low as 4%. So I'm moving into some of the concessions offered by SLB. We have debt forgiveness. And this is targeted towards persons, these are repayment customers who are currently in repayment and they are permanent. who are currently in repayment and they are permanently employed to a registered charity. And so each year, they will get a ten percent forgiveness of their debt. So that's superb. I think that is fantastic. Also, there is a thirty percent reduction in the processing fee for persons who are on the PATH program. That's applicants. If it is that you're on the PATH program, automatically you get a thirty-five percent reduction in your loan processing fee. Currently, the loan processing fee is five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. However, we are waiving that based on COVID and we understand the impact COVID would have had on several household. And so we are waiving all the processing fee, all the application fee for this academic year for persons who are submitting a loan application. So we are making it easy for you to apply. Please apply. We have the good standing benefit, and that's two tiered. For, we have a benefit for persons who are in what we call the moratorium period. And if it is that you've accessed a loan and you're currently in school, once you're able to maintain a grade point average greater than or equal to two point five, then automatically you will access a two percent reduction in the interest rate. So if the moratorium period are in seven point eight and a two percent, that's five point eight. That's crazy. I can't see us getting any better. And so here we go. You access the loan, you perform well, you graduate. In the repayment, you get an additional two percent on, off, sorry, the repayment rate. So if we start at nine point five, then you move into accessing seven point five once you're able to maintain your account in a current status or at least thirty, sorry, at most thirty days late in arrears. So let me go again. Once you're able to maintain your repayment loan, so you would have completed school, would have given you fourteen months to find a job, no repayment kicks in September, and so you start repaying. After the end of your first repayment year, you would have accessed that seven point five percent reduction. So you're be at the seven point five, that's two percent reduction in the interest rate. That's fabulous. Other things that we offer, I mentioned earlier. If you're studying programs, say for example maritime studies, linguistics, agricultural studies, engineering studies, and areas of ICT, then you will qualify for a six percent interest rate. So your base interest rate, once you're applying for one of those programs, would be six percent. If your GPA is good, then you automatically move down into a four percent interest rate. And so we're encouraging our applicants, our current beneficiaries, perform well so you can benefit from these things. Four percent is just fabulous. Children of public sector worker. So if your mother or your father or one of your parents is working with the government and your loan is in repayment, or it could be in moratorium, you qualify for a one percent reduction in the interest rate. Also, you may benefit, you will benefit, not may, you will benefit from a thirty-five percent reduction in the processing fee for new applicants or returning applicants. And so we are making it easier for applicants to access students' loan. It's easy for you to finance your education. It's an investment in yourself and the returns, the rewards will be great. We have one guarantor. We can use, an applicant can use one guarantor for multiple loans. Or that is a multiple products. Remember, I mentioned that the beneficiary can apply for a targeted loan. And if it's a working beneficiary, can also apply for a pays loan or a principal borrower can apply for the pays loan. And so once we assess the guarantor capability, financial capability, and we assess it and see that a guarantor is able to stand the guarantee for both loans, we will accept that. So you don't have to be up and about trying to find two, three guarantors. Once you have one strong guarantor, that guarantor can guarantee two loans for you. And of course, you know, we have the program approval where the guarantor can approve, decide to go through for all three loans in terms of, for the program of study. So those are some of the concessions that we have made to make it easier for applicants, prospective applicants to apply for their students' loan so that they can finance their tertiary education. Now I'm going to move into some of the advantages of accessing SLB's loans. I mentioned earlier and I keep echoing, we have the lowest interest rates islandwide. We have six percent per annum on the pays loan. And I mentioned earlier, we can go as low as four percent for some programs for good standing. I mentioned earlier also that we've extended the repayment, sorry, the loan tenure from ten years to fifteen and twenty years. Twenty years, of course, for those applicants pursuing courses of studies in the medical area as well as lawyers. The moratorium period, we have that moratorium period for a targeted loan. No repayment. You just need to focus on completing your program of study. After you've completed, focus on getting a job. You have that fourteen months to find that employment and then you start repayment. You have that grant, you can access that grant. What it is that we're able to assess your financial position, your household financial position. And so if it is that you pass what we call the means test, then we will automatically, you don't have to apply for the grant. You will automatically get the grant once you would have passed what we classify as the means test. And we ask for no financial collateral, none whatsoever, zero. The repayment, whilst repayment begins after you would have completed a program of study, you have the option of making payments during the moratorium period. And what that does is that it reduces your debt obligation after you would have completed your program of study and started working and start repayment. And so if somebody should, same, I know students tend to go on this work and study program in the summer. And so sometimes they do come back and they make a payment. They make a lump sum payment towards their first loan. So for the first loan, they went for the summer work and they come back and they make a payment, a lump sum payment of, say, one hundred thousand dollars. Let us say in August, when they are, September, when they return. They make that payment that reduce the principal amount. Therefore, it reduces the interest costs on the loan. And so when it gets to repayment, that debt obligation automatically is reduced. And so if it is that you go and you work and study overseas during the summer, please save back some money and repay on your loan. And then you access another loan for that same year. So it's a win-win situation for you. We mentioned earlier that you can access up to two loans per academic year, up to two million dollars. That's one on the targeted loan facility and the other on the pay as you study facility. And now we're going to move into, how do you apply? So what are you waiting for? Apply today, our application period is still open. And I'm going to turn over to Ms. Hughes and she will take you through that process.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Anika Hughes, the Assistant Manager at the Loan Processing Department. Now you're familiar with our loan products and I know you're ready to apply. So let's open a new browser and go to the SLB website, which is at www.slbja.com. You're going to register on our website. You're going to need a valid email address. We will send an activation link to your email address. And then once you click on that activation link, you will then get to the application form where you will complete and submit that application form, after which it will be evaluated. And then you will be notified via email that you have been pre-approved. And with our ninety-nine percent approval rate, I can guarantee you at this point in time, we will probably be at a hundred percent at the end of this academic year. So please, 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 we're begging you to apply. There's no reason for you not to go to school in September. And we're encouraging you to take the wise words of your principal and invest in yourself. In regards to your documents for new applicants, it's quite simple. All you'll need is your TRN, which is your tax registration number, one certified photo, one certified photo, your birth certificate, and my apologies. And we'll also need your banking information. It is very critical that you give us your banking information and it is accurate. We need to make sure that when we approve someone for grants, we are able to deposit it directly to your bank account. So what we find is that sometimes when our applicants are applying, they will put in their parents' bank account information or a friend or aunt or a cousin. And when we are in the process of trying to disperse the monies, we are unable to do so because you would have indicated that this bank account is yours. But yet the bank is not going to put through the payment because you are not a joint, you're not on the account, you're not a joint, you don't have a joint account. And that is going to delay you getting your granting aid. And you're going to need this granting aid to help to offset some of your school expenses. You're also going to need a valid photo ID. It can be your passport, a driver's license, or your national voter's ID. So what are the documents that you will need in regards to your guarantors? In regards to the guarantors, well, let me start off by saying that who is a guarantor? A guarantor has to be a Jamaican national or a Jamaican citizen who is residing in the country for at least five years. Or if not even four, five years, you just need to ensure that the guarantor can establish that they are, they have roots in Jamaica and we can contact them if needs be. A guarantor must be permanently employed and must be confirmed in the position. And the guarantor should be and must be gainfully employed, whether it be formally or informally, or they are self-employed as we should say it. So sometimes I get questions, can my guarantor be a hairdresser? Can my guarantor be a barber? Yes. As long as they can establish just that they are earning stable and consistent income and they are financially capable to guarantee the loan, they will be approved. And our guarantors need to be between the ages of eighteen and sixty years old. And the guarantor must also possess a tax registration number, the TRN. In regards to, for the applicants, I will also go back and say, please ensure that if you have a PATH card, that you submit your PATH card to us because without the PATH card, we won't be able to apply the benefits as Ms. Suj had alluded to earlier in her presentation. So we just need proof that you're on the PATH program and then you'll get the thirty-five percent discount in the processing fee. Granted, for this academic year, there is no processing fee, no application fee. But in the future, you would need the PATH card. And also the PATH card helps to determine if you're, well, enables you to get the granting aid as well. If you have a student ID, for the university, you would also need to submit that to us because we do have first-time applicants to the Students' Loan Bureau. However, you are not a first, you are already enrolled at UWI and you're now just coming to us for your second year at school. You'd be considered to be a first applicant to us, but we will need your student ID as well. And that's basically the application process when it comes on to how to apply and in regards to your guarantors and in regards to the documents that are needed just to apply at this time. I beg and I really, really do encourage you students, please take advantage of the Students' Loan Bureau. It was established for you. So there is no excuse for you not to pursue your tertiary education and not to pursue your dreams. So I'm imploring to the adults and to the mothers and the fathers who are watching, open that browser and apply right now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Cheryl and Anika, for that presentation. I temporarily forgot that Parliament has been parogue because I nearly knocked the desk when I heard of all the, of all the wonderful things that you are doing. But thank you so much. We have been joined by Mr. Sujah Boswell, the President of the Guild Council. Welcome, Sujah, for collaborating with us in this regard. So ladies and gentlemen, students and parents who are online, we are going to now open for questions. And we have a team here, both from the SLB and from HOSIR at the university, that are quite prepared to answer your many questions. As I said before, you can post your questions through the chat option on the YouTube and we will fill as many of them as possible. If we do not, if we are not able rather to answer all your questions within the time that we have scheduled for this town hall, at the end, I'm going to announce a website, an email address rather, that you can email us any additional question and you can rest assured that we will answer. So Ms. Kaidan Martin, our Director of Marketing, will help me to fill the questions.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. And thank you for all the questions you've been sending through the live chat. The first question we have for our team from SLB, it relates to a contact number. The question is, what's the phone number we should be calling? When I call the one, we're always given, it keeps asking for TRN and date of birth. So they want to know what is the route to reach in the Students' Loan Bureau.
Okay, all right. So our contact number is six one nine four seven five two. That's six one nine four seven five two. And we can also be contacted through our Facebook page, which is Students' Loan Bureau, and also on Instagram, at Students' Loan Bureau, on Twitter, at slbjA. And you can also send an email through our tool, info@slbjA.com. In regards to any processing questions, you can also send your queries to LPD@slbjA.com.
Thank you so much. So the second question we have from a medical student who is saying that one million doesn't cover a quarter of my fees. Can't we have, can't we have access to additional funds, is what they're asking?
Remember, I'd mentioned that they could access one million under the targeted loan facility and also another million under the pay as you study facility. So they can access up to two million dollars for any one academic year. So that should be able to take care of each academic year. So if you look at two million dollars per year, so it's two, four, six medical sciences, five years. So we're looking at almost ten million, they'll be able to access ten millions. So that option is there for them to access those two loan products, up to the two million dollars.
And just for clarification, because a number of students have been asking when the loans will be disbursed for the academic year, this 2020, 2021 academic year.
Well, once their application is completed and at a D status, it will go to the department that does disbursement. And once we get confirmation of registration from UA, then the disbursement will be made. So it's really dependent on how advanced they are in the process and if they have registered so far at school.
May I just add, just to reassure our students that once we are advised that you have applied for a student loan and it is in process, we do not bar you from any classes or any assessment, et cetera. And for good reasons, because we are told that although there's an element of risk, I've been reassured by what Cheryl has said, that ninety-nine point nine percent of applicants do of applicants do get through. So don't worry about you applying and, you know, you don't have to stay out of school until the loan has been dispersed. We accommodate you whilst student loan is processing.
So the, 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 most of this would rely on you in terms of how quick you're able to submit all your documents, get your guarantors together, submit your documents in terms of signing, pay your processing fee. Sorry, because we've waived the processing fee this year. So the only fee that you have to pay would be the insurance. Of course, we can't waive the insurance because the loan has to be insured in the event of any kind of permanent disability or death of the, of the applicant. And so once you've submitted all your required documents, pay that insurance, there's nothing that should prevent you from registering or completing for ascending what we call the E-status, meaning that you have completed your process with the SLB and for the university to, to be satisfied that yes, you have financial support from the SLB.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sodhi. There are several more questions for you. So we have one student saying, I had to be registered as a full-time student to get the loan. If I switch to part-time in the middle of the year, will my loan stand?
It is a little bit difficult for us to be processing your application when you have indicated that you're full-time, especially if you are, you've completed the process, you are at a E-status and we've made the dispersment to the school and then you're going to be switching from full-time to part-time. It's not to say it's impossible for the switch to take place, but that would have to mean that dialogue would have to take place between the university and the Students Loan Bureau. Because at this juncture, it would more be more of an overpayment at this time because the full-time tuition is more than a part-time tuition. So we're not seeing where that would become an issue. What would have to be done though is that that correction would need to be made definitely for your second year so that we could adjust it in our system to say that you're now at part-time, so we will be paying the right tuition. I just want to add also that once the approval has been granted for the dispersment to continue for the part-time program, there's a particular aspect in terms of the graduation date because I'm assuming that once you move from full-time to part-time, then the graduation date may need to be changed. And change meaning that you may graduate later rather than earlier. And so what we would require is for the applicant to apply for what we call a graduation date extension or an extension of the repayment start date. So some of the requirements that we'll need is that we would need the, the letter from the institution, the university, advising SLB that John Brown has now enrolled part-time and he's her, sorry, he's, I said John. His new graduation date will be twenty twenty-two. And then we will process that in our system so that we don't call upon repayment if they were originally scheduled to repay twenty twenty-three instead of twenty twenty-four. And then now there are certain fees, well, there's, there's one fee, sorry, and that's insurance. And that is to insure the loan for the additional year or years for the loan that was originally dispersed, for the insure, for the loan to be insured up to the extended period. So we have to bear that in mind. So if we're going to change, we're going to extend the, or stay in school, we have to request what we call a graduation date extension because we would originally have one graduation date and then that graduation date feeds into the repayment start date. And so we would have to make those adjustments to our system.
Thank you so much for that clarification. Another question is, can someone switch from the pays loan to a regular loan?
Alright, for this year, persons who were on the pays loan, typically they do transition in the second year and they do continue on the pays loan. For this year, in light of the COVID pandemic, we took into consideration that person's income may be a little bit tight or some persons may now be unemployed. So what we did do is that we would have done a different assessment and would have allowed persons who were typically geared towards a pays loan and we've actually approved them for the targeted loan. So depending on what the situation is or their circumstance, they can appeal and let us know and we are more than considerate persons and we're reasonable and we can make the adjustment based on the situation or the case.
Thank you so much. And another question we have here is, I would like to find out where to get the documents for the guarantors after you receive the pre-approved documents.
This year, persons who were pre-approved were sent an email and in the email were attachments for both the applicant and the guarantors. So just check your email again. If you still don't see your documents or the guarantors, you can just send an email to LPD@slbjA.com. Just indicate your name, your TRN, and just indicate that you are participating in this town hall meeting and I will look at it and resend the documents to you. But we do apologize if you did not get the documents, but they should have been attached and they were attached, so. A remedy is after.
Thank you so much for that, Ms. Hughes. There is a question about salary deduction. So if, in regards to pays, if your company does not do salary deduction, can a standing order be done via the bank? And that's for payments for pays.
For pays. We do approve standing orders on a case-by-case situation. So if it is that the place of employment does not facilitate it, we will look at that. And when we probably will look to the guarantors to see if the guarantor's place of employment facilitates salary reduction order. But for the most part, we do approve it once there's a situation like that.
Okay, thank you. And as it relates to the four percent, students are, well, they want to know or be reminded which programs would qualify them for the four percent and if there is a particular GPA requirement. So just a quick reminder.
Okay, no, there, there isn't a, the four percent. We, for us to reach at the four percent, they have to be enrolled in the special programs and those programs are, and I'm going to outline, that's maritime studies, logistics, agricultural studies, engineering, and information communication technologies. So those are the five programs. So to get to that four percent, yes, you would have to have that good GPA for the moratorium and you would have to maintain a current status for the customers who are in repayment. So you have to maintain that two-point-five GPA at minimum and you will benefit from that four percent.
Thank you so much for that clarification. Just a few more questions for our SLB team. What is the means test? The means test was mentioned and a number of students are asking for some explanation.
Alright, the, the means test will capture information based on the application that would have been submitted to SLB in terms of the number of persons in the household, the income, the expenditure of the household. If it is that there is spending in terms of there is a sick person and let us say, for example, the household earning, let us say, five million dollars annually. And if there is one particular household member that is bleeding the, the income, then those kind of things will come out in terms of does this applicant from this household require a targeted loan? Or is it that they're more suitable for what you call the pays loan? So the means test is just assessing the household income and expenditure and arriving at that decision. And that's all computerized, arriving at that decision in terms of yes, the household can sustain this pays loan or it cannot sustain the pays loan and so we're gonna put, approve the targeted loan for the customers. So it's essentially assessing your income and expenditure.
Thank you so much for that. Students are unable to check their loan status. Could you please outline the procedure for checking same or how they should proceed?
They are unable to.
To check their loan status. So they would have applied and may want to check on the status of the application.
Oh, the application. Okay. Presently, the website, that customer portal or the student portal is not open. It should be open by the end of next week. We are actually doing an upgrade on the website and that's why it is disabled. So by the end of next week, they should be able to go on and see what their status is. And once it keeps changing, based on the progress in the, throughout the application process, it will change. So they should be able to see it. And we do apologize for the inconvenience at this time.
Okay, thank you so much for that clarification. And students would also like to know if switching a major after year one will affect their loan status.
If, if it is that they change a major and it's going to extend or even reduce their tenure in school, then they would have to request, if it's going to be extended, a graduation date extension or a reduction in graduation date, if it is that it's going to be low. So if they change a major and those first-year programs are not, you can't contribute towards the new program that, sorry, the new major, that's the major you asked, right? Right, if it's going to extend it, then you would need to, then you would need to request what we call a graduation date extension. But it should significantly impact them. The one thing that I would add to that though is, if they're going to change their major, they must notify the Students Loan Bureau because changing your major could impact your tuition. And we may be paying the incorrect amount. It could be underpaying or overpaying. So we do find that students will change their majors, it's facilitated here, but you're not notifying us. And then when you're getting to the end of your program, you're going to hear that maybe there's some monies outstanding and that can delay.
Or, you know, they don't need to. However, students are saying they are unable.
Is just send an email to LPD@slbjA.com, outline your issue. We'll assess it and we can give you a bypass and allow you to submit your application. But please bear in mind that the requirements at this point in time, our system is designed is that it requires two guarantors. So any submission of an application without taking care of that criteria would have to be done by us to give you a bypass or an override to do so.
Thank you so much. I've seen a number of students ask about the possibility of having a scholarship while also taking a loan. Is it possible or will there be any implications?
If they have a scholarship, they're, I'm not, if someone can remind me, what's the unit at UA that you, they will go through? It's Office of Student Financing. And they would submit their scholarship information and they would write to the Students Loan Bureau outlining the scholarship amount. And if they're either asking for a reduction or if they're asking to keep the scholarship and the student's loan, the requests were made to us and it would be reviewed and our decision would be made. If you, more often than not, we will tell you that you can keep the scholarship and the loan and we will continue to process the application.
Okay, thank you so much for that. I have three more questions and then I'll ask the Guild President if he has any questions. None or comments? Okay, so moving on with the questions, is there an application process for grants?
Well, grants are basically allocated after the means test is done. But if you want to apply for a grant, if for instance, you were not approved for it, all you can do is just write to the Students Loan Bureau and we will assess your situation and approve on a case-by-case basis. So please don't be deterred if you didn't, if you are not approved for one, just write and request one and we'll see how best we can approve you for granting aid.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Hughes. The last two questions relate to challenges re-movement with COVID. One from a student who is living in Montego Bay. Do they have to travel to Kingston to submit documents? And a guarantor is asking similarly how to submit documents living outside Jamaica. This is the guarantor.
Guarantor is living outside of Jamaica?
That's the question. Jamaican living outside of Jamaica to be a guarantor for a student. Is that a possibility and if so?
Alright, as I had indicated earlier, that one of the requirements that a guarantor is that we would prefer or need our guarantors to be residing in Jamaica so that we will have contact with you. When you're outside of our jurisdiction, it becomes very difficult for us to track and keep in contact with the guarantors. What's, what I, again, you can just send an email to us and outline your situation and we can look at it. But as it stands, we would need a guarantor to be residing in Jamaica. In regards to the submission of documents during this COVID time, by next week, our document upload feature will be up on our website and you will be sent some notifications and told that you can upload your documents via the website. However, some, your contracts, maybe your promissory notes, your certificates of agreement, the guarantee agreements, those are documents that we must have the originals. What has been taking place of late is that the applicants who are mostly in Montego Bay have been sending their documents with the contracts via courier. And they will address it to us and once we get it, we will notify you that we've received the documents. So all the other documents outside of the loan contracts come next week. You'll be able to upload those documents via the SLB website. And some persons have been scanning and submitting their documents via email. We have been facilitating it, but the only thing that we must have, and I have to stress again, is that we must have your contracts, those original contracts must be physically, we must have the physical documents.
Okay, thank you so much. So because we're talking about COVID, some questions have just come in about the interviews being physical, face-to-face or?
Okay, this year we have not been doing face-to-face interviews. What is, what we're doing is that once an applicant, applicant sets an appointment on the website, we will call you the day before and advise you that you do not need to come into our office. We will call you at the time and on a date that you had set and we will conduct an interview over the phone. So again, I'll repeat, you are not required to visit our office. We will call you the day before your scheduled appointment and ask if you would be available via phone on the following day at the time that you had set the appointment and we will conduct the interview over the telephone so that you don't have to take the risk of coming into the Bureau.
Thank you so much. And for students who did not have their questions answered in this form, could you provide again the contact details and email address as well as a phone number?
You can contact us via Facebook page, which is Students Loan Bureau. On Instagram, at Students Loan Bureau. On Twitter, at slbjA. And you can send your email queries to info@slbjA.com. Or any questions regarding the loan applications, you can send your emails to LPD@slbjA.com.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And here on the screen, if you direct your attention to the screen, you will see those contact information and it will remain there for a while until we have ended this, this town hall. I want to thank again Cheryl and Anika for so ably fielding all of those questions, answering them. And thank our students who have demonstrated a tremendous amount of interest reflected in the questions that they have asked. We know you will continue to have questions even beyond this town hall. If you do, please direct those questions to marketing dot communications at UWI Mona dot edu dot J M. That's marketing dot communications at UWI Mona dot edu dot J M. And our marketing team will answer those questions as best as they can and, and reply to you by email. So before we give the floor to the principal for his final comments, I, I'm, I'm sure our Guild President has to say something.
Thank you, Campus Registrar. It seems as if you saw him speaking to Prof. Alago. I would want to firstly thank the Student Loan Bureau as well as the UA Administration for coordinating this activity this afternoon. I think it's one that is very much worthwhile and it is one that is very much welcomed by the students because there has been a lot of questions being asked in the past week about the SLB arrangement. The reality is that COVID has presented its own challenges and now we have to find strategic ways. The reality is that COVID has presented its own challenges and now we have to find strategic ways to get around them. And importantly, we must thank SLB as well for waiving the application and processing fees. It is something that has, even though it it is a small change, it is a big change. It is something that is appreciated by our students. And so we must commend as a Guild Council, the SLB for that. I know we enjoyed a very fruitful relationship as a Guild Council in the previous administration and that is something that we look forward to continuing. And so you can rest assured that this Guild Council continuing forward will be working closely with SLB to ensure that whatever difficulties our students find themselves with, that we can find the best arrangement and the best solutions to those issues. Um, I would have heard some things that I would definitely want us to share. If you can share this point with me that the Guild Council can share with our students. Because the reality is that we understand that student financing for tertiary studies in Jamaica is challenging. And I mean, the, we can, we can, we can tell you that we've been having our own debates internally from the Guild and from the university administration about student financing. And we believe that this is one of the solutions to this problem. It is not the final and and it's not the, it is not the golden bullet, but it is a part of the 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 long-term solution. And so we would want to ensure that our students are fully much aware of all the available solutions that exist. And so again, I would want to thank you for making this time available. And even from a Guild standpoint, we are welcome to having our own town hall with students and facilitating that to ensure that the information can be as widely disseminated as possible. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Sergio. And um over to Principal for some concluding remarks.
Thank you very much, Registrar. And I would like to also add the thanks of the University of Western is for the Students Loan Bureau, for the team who have come here today to share the information that they have shared. I don't think many of us recognized how much happens within the Students Loan Bureau, how much thought process goes into facilitating the loans, the grants and the processing that happens behind the scenes. And we saw a a glimpse of that today, which for us was very interesting and very informative, that there were three different types of loans. I don't think most people realize that, um, and that you can access them in various ways. That the guarantor situation is one that you can work your way through, that there are so many ways to contact the Students Loan Bureau and that you will get the responses which will help you make your decisions. I also think that the forum, as said by the Guild President, opens the opportunity for continued dialogue um where students, their parents, their guarantors will feel that there is an agency where they can reach out, find individuals and find answers to the questions that they may have. We seem to be a loan-averse society because we're always worried about how and when we're gonna pay back that loan. I think the way you have presented it today confirms that it is an investment that the students are making in themselves, that the guarantors and parents are making in their charges and it will pay off doubly, triply many times over. But we first have to make that step forward. Also interesting was the fact that you could do loans at different cycles of your your career in terms of first year, second year, and you could even get to the graduate program. So I think the information shared was marvelous. I think the opportunity opens many more doors and I think we are gonna have a continued fruitful relationship. I look forward to being able to share information about the campus with Students Loan Bureau as you refashion, because you're clearly rethinking, reimagining yourself and COVID is doing it to both you and us. So I think we're working together hand-in-hand to see how we can move forward. Our students are, that's the reason we are here. They're our clientele. And we work every way we can to ensure that students can access the education that they need, that they desire. I think in our Guild Council, we have another partner who has been able to work with us in the past and will continue to work with us to ensure that students take advantage of the opportunities. And the biggest opportunity right now is to make the application for the loan. I quoted a ninety percent success rate based on what we had as data. You have a ninety-nine percent success rate based on applications. It is really now for the students to make those applications. If you do not apply, you will not have the opportunity. I will also tell you that there are so many other things that are available once you have made that application. That students loan application opens the door for much of what happens in the university. We are unable to consider you for some of the other benefits that we could try and find in the university unless you have a student's loan. That's the foundation. We're then able to help with various other types of grants, bursaries, disbursements, uh, book loans that can help you move through the exercise. I therefore look forward to a interesting year. Twenty twenty is been a year like no other year. I know it will continue to be an interesting year. And we therefore stretch our hands forward to do and reach places we have never reached before. Thank you, Registrar, for having hosted us and taken us through this exercise. I thank the members of the UWI team from admissions, from scholarships, from payables, from accounts, from student services, all members of the UWI team, the marketing and communication, and of course, MITs who have made possible the again, the sharing in terms of a town hall. But I would especially like to thank the Students Loan Bureau for reaching out and facilitating today's town hall. Thank you very much and do have a good afternoon. Registrar?
Thank you, Principal. So this concludes our town hall. And um Cheryl, Anika from the Student Loan Bureau, we expect you to be flooded with applications. So thank you, our students out there and our parents who I know have been tuning in. Remember, you can send additional questions and we'll be too happy uh to answer them. Um, thank you. God bless you and looking forward to seeing you all um come September.